Fred?
Yeah.
All set?
Alright, thank you. Alright, this is the Tilton Northfield Fire and EMS Fire District Joint Meeting with the Commissioners and the Building Committee. It is November 24th, 2025. We are, it's 5:30 PM, we're in the downstairs meeting room of the Tilton Town Hall. Those members present include Commissioner Paul Oger, myself, Budget Committee Chair.
Building.
I'm sorry, Building Committee Chair, Paul Blaisdale. And then up on the committee, we have Lisa Martin, and Kevin Waldron, and Derek Farrell in the back. Deputy Chief Mike Robinson is here, and interim Chief Valvanius here. We have several members of the public and some additional firefighters present. On the agenda for tonight will include handing the meeting over to the Building Committee to talk about the information sessions, we'll have a public comment. And then later on, the Commissioners will need to review the Building Committee's discussion. And we have minutes to approve. So I'll hand it over to Paul.
Why don't we start with the minutes, if you don't mind, Kevin? You are the Vice Chair of the Building Committee. Are you acting in that capacity? And have you called our meeting to work?
I called a joint meeting. Do I have to call the Building Committee separately?
Good question. I don't know why you would if it's a joint meeting.
Yeah, I don't think we need to, it's a joint meeting. We'll take minutes from both off of the recording.
We have no issue either way, it is procedural. So. Yeah, do we have a call on?
Yes.
Yep.
Like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the Building Committee, 10:23, 25 meeting.
I said we're in.
Any discussion? Eric?
I didn't see him.
Okay. Allohs in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next, I think the next thing, next logical step would be to open it up for public comment. So, those members of the public that are here, the floor is yours.
And what do you expect from us?
If you have comments, this is your opportunity to make them.
I thought going, maybe we gave you enough comments, I was more interested in how you were assimilated. Okay, so Helen Hardinberg, I think if you showed up at the district meeting, your whole thing would fail. I think that that was clear, at least in the Monday session, and I understand from Tim that the Wednesday session was fairly similar. I think you really need to look at it, you need some stronger speaks, you need a little bit more data, you need to have some rationale. Why do we need this? You know, if that building is gonna get condemned the longer we wait, then it's just gonna be a bigger problem. I think all of these things have to come into play. And I didn't hear that, I'm not saying you didn't say it, but I didn't feel that it was strong enough. And I think that the way it was responded to wasn't strong enough. I think the dollars were not talked about at the appropriate time, in the appropriate way. I don't think the funding has been thought out, it's like a big box of bonding, you know. Okay, we're gonna bond $20 million right up front, did we need to do that? There was no discussion about that, it came as afterthoughts, the calculation of the taxes came as sort of like, in the end, it wasn't... It wasn't well presented, okay? You may have prepared and thought we're prepared, but it just didn't come across that way. So I think you will fail in March if you continue down that path. The one interesting thing I will note is that people kept talking about a Plan B. I don't know if that came up on Wednesday, that it came up on Monday. I don't think there's a Plan A or a Plan B, but I do think that there are alternatives, that you might be able to... You'd have to hash out, and what does that mean? But maybe you say, you know, alternative is, let's do it all. You know, another alternative is, we can do this much in five years, and this much in another five years, and we can bond it twice separately. Another is, we can just build one big station in Northfield, and maybe rehab Center Street to house a couple of extra pieces of equipment. I mean, there's a lot of alternatives that you can without having to go to the drawing board again. As opposed to Plan A or Plan B, because you've got to, you're gonna have to go back out and present this again before the meeting, or you're not gonna have any success, that's my opinion. So having said all of that, alternatives, look back over to you, because I really wanted to hear your opinions.
Is there anyone else from the public?
I have some questions too, if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Lisa Moriarty, I am a new resident of the community, I moved into my house last year. So I never received the survey regarding the fire department changes. I'm gonna start by saying, I 100% agree that there needs to be a new fire station. Based off of what I heard, and based off of Helen's comments, I agree. I don't feel that it was well described to the public of how we're going to do X, Y, Z, and why we need two stations. I know we talked about timing and whatnot, we're a rural community. I would like to know, based off of other towns in the area and population, how they handle working out of one fire station with the population they have? Because I don't think that, I understand that we want to be close to a certain area, I know that the comment about the land was made, like we don't have to fight for land. However, there was talk towards the end of the meeting that the land swap for Tilton may not be completely approved by the voters. And to me, that raised a red flag, that if the voters of Tilton don't know that that land swap is approved or not, then maybe we shouldn't be hatching, arching from County Archimedes.
I think the intent of that was to raise a question, Ruth.
Yeah, so I guess...
There is an agreement with the Board of Selectment in the town of Tilton to exchange that land on Sanborn Road for a paid lot on Center Street.
So is that approved, and doesn't need to go to the voters?
No, it will need to go to the voters.
Okay, so that's where like my first red flag, if we don't actually have the land yet then, right? So that was a concern that I had. My other concern regarding the tax rate, like I think you said Northfield was gonna be higher than Tilton. I'd like to know the rationale behind why one town would be paying more per tax rate than another. And then, what happens when we build more in one town over another? Does their tax rate go down for the fire department? Because I know, I'm not 100% sure, I've heard that they're building like 500 new residences in Tilton. Is that accounted for with this tax rate? And is that why they're paying less? But if we have less of a population in Northfield or Tilton, why are, like, why is there a different tax rate between the two? Yes?
Jason, thank you.
Thanks, so I apologize, Monday's a tough, 5:30 was a push for me, this was a short, it was a meeting. Tilton pays 70% approximately of the tab.
Okay.
On your budget, on your buildings, your personnel, everything, okay?
But that wasn't presented at the meeting, that's why I have the questions.
Well, yeah, so that's a great question, so.
Yeah.
You know, I don't do social media, but there's a lot of stuff going on right now online, and there's a lot of folks that wanna talk about splitting the district. So, do you live in Tilton-Northfield?
Northfield, in all honesty, I think we should combine them. I don't know, we have two different police departments, two different, like, some separate cells together.
Well, we, so, so we have, they're combined already, right? So, there, there's always a bit of an undercurrent of Northfield, ah, we gotta split the district. Northfield pays 30%-ish of what's going on.
And that's why I'm here to learn, because I just know these things.
Or... Yeah, and, or, they can pay 100% of whatever they wanna do. So, Tilton, because of the calls and the evaluation, so, we may pay a dollar three versus your dollar six, but there's more property, and more commercial, and more stuff.
And that's understood?
Yeah, so, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that my house, it doesn't mean that I pay less than you.
They're wanting to...
Not presented at the meeting, though, and that's where the concern is.
It means that the town has more property on the books, and they're gonna pay this versus what Northfield pays.
Please, so that ratio was determined by the evaluation of the towns and is set by DRA.
Okay.
That's not determined by us.
And that's fine, but that wasn't presented at the meeting, and so that's why I'm asking these questions, because...
Yeah, well, that's, that's a deeper dive, and those are, those are good numbers to get into, but historically, 70% of the call volume is in Tilton, and ironically, 78%, it, listen, it could be 67, 68, you know. My numbers are not solid, right?
Yeah, you're in the neighborhood.
You, alright, so, 60 to 70 is, is, the calls are heavy in Tilton, and less in Northfield, and so therefore, related or not, the assessment and the paying the bill is heavy in Tilton versus Northfield.
Right.
It's based on valuation, and it's not the actual value, sometimes it's, so DRA sets the, they have a equilibrium calculation that they have,
So...
Yeah.
So like, sometimes you look at Northfield valuation, you look at Tilton's valuation, and it actually doesn't match what the Fire Districts is. And that's because DRA goes back, if, because if Tilton does a reevaluation this year, and Northfield doesn't do a full reevaluation for five years, that's not fair, so DRA does another calculation to make sure it's fair across the board.
They're a little staggered, they're off by a couple of years.
But if like, so say Tilton explodes and their valuation goes way up, that actually helps Northfield, because Northfield's portion of the tax bill will go down. And it's based purely on that valuation.
And so that was my question, that if that occurs, will the tax rate be readjusted? Or are we, if we bond this, locking in for 20 years of the dollar six per thousand? Or is it going to be something that's adjustable based off of that information?
And your tax, your tax rate is adjusted every year.
Okay, alright.
Not just for the current rent, but...
Yeah, and the...
I know other things are, I just wasn't sure, because this isn't a standard budget for taxes, right? This isn't coming out of the budget, this is a separate bonding. So I wanted to know that that would be adjusted anyway, or if it would be adjusted as well, so that's good to know, thank you.
It's, it's a little weird, because Tilton has a little more property on the books. We get more buildings on the parcels, and we get, we get more stuff, so 70% of the note is here.
And again, that wasn't very clear at the meeting, so, and I would like to say, I volunteer contribute to sit through.
Yeah, and, you know, that's, that's a good, no, that's a good...
If you guys wanna run through something, please contact me, I'm happy to provide feedback of, hey, this makes sense, this doesn't make sense, or, hey, would this be something? I don't mind spending my time to help, so that's something to be more effectively communicated.
Well, in all honesty, that presentation was discussed over the course of five or six open public meetings, so...
So, this is another thing that I don't necessarily need to bring up today, but the only reason I knew that that meeting was going on in the public, and the reason this was going on, is because Kevin posted to Facebook the postcard images regarding the public meetings. So Northfield does a great job with their town letter, and on their calendar, I don't think they include the fire committee stuff. And I'd love to see it on there, because I'm going to the zoning board after this, because there's something on there that I'm interested in, and it's posted on the Northfield newsletter, and that's great, because they put a calendar of all the meetings. So this is where the separation kinda causes that issue of like, Tilton-Northfield, it's like, but we're a combined community for some things and not for other things, so...
That's a good point, I apologize for interrupting, but we have gone to the Northfield Select Board multiple times.
And I did not get that. Yeah.
We're trying to kind of reel it all in, and have good commu, we have been to Northfield more than we meant to Tilton, as far as board...
Yeah, and I don't mind bringing that up to them either, and I will, because...
Yeah, no, that's... That's important.
It's another thing with the water department, I fought with them this year about the communication of shutting down the water, right? Like, I didn't have water for multiple days, because they didn't communicate, because they didn't, and so, I'm fine with going to that and whatever.
We can talk on the sidewalk about that.
But I didn't, I also didn't receive that postcard in the mail, and a lot of people had it, and it's very frustrating to me, because I am 100%, I did not get that postcard. Because if I saw that, I would have made an effort to go to it, and you're right, there are public meetings, and I will do better to come to these, because now I know that I have to look somewhere else for it.
So all of the Commissioners' meetings, the Budget meetings, the Building Committee meetings are posted on the Fire Department website?
Right, yeah.
Now, as far as not receiving the postcard, the, what we did was, we went back and used the same database that UNH used when they mailed the survey.
Which I wasn't a resident, so that would have been, so anyone else who bought a property since 2023?
It was the address that got the mail and not the person, so I don't know what...
Yeah, I just, I question it, because I have two units, and I get the mail every day, and me or my tenant did not receive that mail. There's one mailbox, so there's a gap somewhere, I don't know how it was handled or whatever, but thanks to Kevin for posting it to Facebook, and that I pay attention on the town pages, and what's going on regarding that. As for comments on the actual presentation and everything, as I said, I understand the need for a new firehouse 1000%. You guys are working in an area that is questionable by a lot of means, and thank you for everything you've done so far with that. I think that price tag is a little too big, and I don't understand, fully comprehend the needing two different locations. If we could do one bigger location, that maybe has a price tag of, you know, let's just call it 18 million over the 21, I don't know why we wouldn't do that, like... And I know you've gone through a lot, so I'm not, but...
Well, at the end of the day, Lisa, that would be our preference also, without question. The issue comes in, where do you put it?
That's a great question, but it sounds like a...
Just put it in Northfield, well, you've got it, it's, you need a big space.
You've neglected East Tilton since the Winnisquam Station closed 20 years ago. What are you gonna do with the other side of 93? Would, we've, we've been sucking wind over there for 20 years, Ellen.
Oh, you, okay, you got, you got...
No, no, no. Go ahead. Yeah, I mean, it's been a gap for, for so long.
Okay, so Center Street doesn't handle that?
Not like, not like it used to.
But you know what, in all fairness, at least the last five years of the existence of Winnisquam Fire Valley, there's really nothing more than keystone cobs, they couldn't muster a crew, we would regularly beat their butts to their own door.
So why can't we put the bigger one over on this Sanburton Road? Because, and then my other question regarding that is that someone mentioned that the Sanburton Fire Department is like a mile away from where the...
Sanburton has not been 24 hours staffed.
Okay, and I get that, that's why I have to bring something up that I gotta go and learn.
Very well, yeah, so... So, so... Yeah, go ahead, chief.
No, he just, the question just came up, is Sanburton 24 hours staffed? And I, I believe they are, they just went, but I don't, not sure if, if the, per DM staff member calls up, do they fill that, do you know?
Yeah.
They still, okay, they're filling, so they are staffed 24 hours a day now. Are they staffing with two?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that has been a very recent change. So they weren't staffing, then they were staffing with one, but not filling it, so now they're staffing with two, okay, so...
So, so a long-term plan is to get out of Center Street, get a footprint into East Tilton, and then eventually rebound into, adapt into the, the Tilton-Northfield, you know, the core...
Village.
Village, right? And then just leave two, two staff as a substation at X and 25.
Okay, but you're building the substation to house an additional eight people.
No, we're not, we're, two, it's four, to get Center Street four over there, which would eventually house two, which in 50 years would probably house four. So, the, the charge from the Commissioners to the Building Committee is to look at a 50-year plan. We don't wanna keep doing additions and, and build this, and, and, yeah.
Okay, and I understand that, I understand that, I mean, again, this, the problem I, the problem I'm having with, if we go back to the presentation,
And what's, what's the cost of two bedrooms versus four?
Is that you brought up the people thing, and all of a sudden, we're now hearing people saying, we're committing to another eight people to be able to do these four, four shifts, the minute the building is done, so now you're adding fuel to the fire.
At, at five years out, Ellen, five years...
It wasn't said.
It, it was, because at five years out...
No, it wasn't said on the Monday meeting, maybe on the Wednesday meeting it was.
Well, it, it's been talked about, yeah.
Here maybe, I'm just saying in the public meeting...
At all the public meetings. So, the five-year plan would be, when Park Street is completed, be four staff members per shift, whether they're in Center Street, or Sanborn Road, or Park Street, that we would add two at Sanborn Road. Two per shift, which is eight, so it's two, 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 two.
So eight was the right number.
Yeah, so, eight, so it's two per shift, you know, and again, it's a big number, because...
Yeah, I get it's two per shift, I'm trying to point out that the way it was presented, it did not come across clearly. And I think people are thinking, we're gonna get a 20 million bond right up front, and while we're marching through this 20-year bond, which by the way, we will use some in X year, and X year, and X year, so I don't know why we don't have several bonds that we can do over time, so we don't have to take the burden all at once, right? And have the money just sit there, I mean, that's one thing. But then to tell us, oh, and by the way, you can forget it, it's gonna cost you another million dollars, and by then it'll probably be $2 million, because we're gonna staff it, I mean, it came across as, we're gonna staff it right now, as soon as the buildings are done, that's how it came across.
We've talked at length, though.
I know what you're talking about, I'm trying to say what it came across as, Kevin.
I will agree that it wasn't clear on when those, that staffing increase was gonna occur, that's all I'm gonna say.
Well, Kevin, of course, from Northfield, these guys have been tasked with an impossible job.
Agreed.
This is, this is literally the, the fourth time in 15 years, 20 years, and every time a project came up, it was, it's too much, there's something better, I know there's something better out there, and there's no longer anything better out there. We had a gift horse that was passed up on, you could have a $5 million fire station, walking distance. There, there are, there's, $21 million is too much money, there's no two ways about it. But what alternative do we have? That building was built to supersede Bucket Brigades, Bucket Brigades, and they're still working out of that building. We've gotta find something, but we wait for the perfect, and nope, that's not, that's not, there's something else better out there, and there's something else better. We're running out of, we're running out of property, we're running out of time, we're running out of options.
It's gonna fall down, those stairs, or we're gonna have a liability that's bigger than the buildings.
Could I, could I ask Matt Gilman to, he's been waiting very graciously for the last 10 minutes to speak?
I have more of a position statement than questions or banter. I, full disclosure, I come tonight with my Professional Firefighter Association Vice President hat on. This morning, the body took a vote on the body stance, so the floor firefighter stance, on what we believe the forward direction should be. We are infinitely aware that $21 million is an absurd amount of money, and is too much of a burden to ask on the community. We're also aware of the almost impossible task to come to, you know, a consensus on what meets all the needs. Our position is that the best move going forward would be either a rebuild or a remodel of Center Street that allows us to staff two ambulances and an engine, and has rooms for six individuals on duty, that is followed with a conversation with our mutual aid partners to find out what, what solves the far ends of the district, as far as responses there. The union body is pretty aware that regionalization is a thing that's coming around more of the country, New England's the, the slow uptake on it, and that there are solutions to solve these problems, we just gotta think outside of our own borders a little bit more. We're a regionalized organization ourself, so if someone says that they can't do regionalization while working within a regionalized organization, it's kind of, kind of silly. We don't know numbers, but we would be willing to bet that rebuilding a fire station that houses two ambulances and engine at Center Street would be much cheaper. It keeps us within our response districts to where the vast majority of our calls are, and the largest life hazard is, and it doesn't move us away from another chunk of our calls, by either moving just to Park Street, where we get moved away from 60% of our calls in Tilton, or we move just to Sanborn Road, we get moved away from the other half of our district.
Okay, thank you. Just as a, well, two things, number one, Matt is a resident of the community, so his voice is welcome. For those firefighters who are not residents, they're welcome to speak, but what Matt says as a resident carries different weight. Second thing is, just a reminder to everyone that this committee has been working on a mandate written by the three deputy, the two deputy chiefs and the chief, and unanimously approved by the Commissioners. So while Matt's comments are welcome, and we certainly are listening to them, what our focus has been on is that page and a half document that we were given by the deputy chiefs and chief. And that's just, I'm not saying that that's right or wrong or whatever, but that was the direction we were given, that's what we responded to. Now, if that directive happens to change in the future, then those are the garden rails that will be used.
What's the likelihood that we can expand the footprint of Center Street, include all that space and all that engine and apparatus? It's, it's a pretty narrow footprint, so...
From a, from a union sense, we are advocating for two ambulances and engine at Center Street.
Yeah, so how can we, how can we stuff that into a single-floor ADA compliant footprint?
Probably couldn't do it on a single floor.
I know, that's, that's the struggle, that's...
It'd be cheaper than two fire stations.
And how do we, Matt?
This is an elevator right here, how much do you think this costs?
How, how do we blow that building down, keep the business running, and still do everything we gotta do? How do we get everybody out, knock the building down, build a new building in eight months, and then bring everybody back in, and not interrupt the level of great service that you guys provide? I mean, how do we not screw up, you know, how do we not interrupt what we do and how we do, or how you do and what you do?
We'd have to run out of trailers at Park Street while those vehicles being built, I mean, that's like, that's the only, I mean, that's not the only option, but that's an easy option off the top.
It would be, it would be limited interruption, right?
Yeah, and then, and then...
In fact, we don't own enough land.
And then, now all of a sudden, take, take this and get three ends in three days and quarters?
We, we discovered that that building occupies all of the... So the, the, the southern end and the eastern end of that building are on, well, the staircase on the eastern end of the building are on the property line. The, the northern end of the building does have some property behind it before it hits the railroad, we do have an easement, we couldn't build into it, but there is an easement on the, on the northern part, on the western part. We own to where the chief's car starts parking, and then we own two more spots. According to the survey that just occurred, because of the parking issues out there, we've been totally owned additional, two more spots deep, which would be six total. I think what the firefighters are talking about is moving, you would, western expansion on four feet on the western side, and expansion two feet on the back. It's not great, you could fit two ambulances, you could put an engine, you could fit a gear bay, you'd have 3,300 square feet per level, so you'd have to put two levels.
Two levels, and where would you park Car 1 and Car 3?
Car 1 and Car 3, where you do right now.
Inside?
No.
Well, if you're giving that lot, that, if you're giving that space up to build a building, where would you park?
No, you're, you're only moving the, the building four feet. It, it gives you 6,600 square feet, we did a space needs, 6,600 square feet isn't enough room, but I think it could be done. I mean, but it's not, it's still, it still puts you at what you're doing now, but it puts two ambulances and an engine at Center Street. And it allows you to operate now, and then, and look forward, you know, to a regionalization plan. It's not great, it's not the, but it's, it's something that could be probably done for under $5 million. I don't know, it's not, it's not a long-term solution, it's not a 50-year plan, not, it's not that.
Yeah, well, that's...
It's not, it's not, it's a short-term fix for cheap, because we've been so many times, here's our long-term plan, it gets turned down, here's our long-term plan, it gets turned down, here's our long-term plan, it gets turned down.
So why do you think...
So where...
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Sean, but what is it that the town... what is it that the town can't accept from a fifty-year plan, or even a thirty-year plan, let's just say? I mean, are, is everybody balking just because of how much it's gonna cost? Because they're paying for it, and in thirty years, I'm gonna be dead. Hate to say it, but I'm gonna be dead, so, but you know.
I'd be here with less than a hand.
No, 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 I'll be a hundred by then, so I'm not, you know, it's like, I, I think I'll be long gone, my grandmother was ninety-eight, longest living.
Do you think the twenty million dollar one is a fifty-year plan? I don't.
You don't think, you think in fifty years will be bigger than that? Well, then that are tax basis, if we, if, if in fifty years, we need more than, because, what was it, six ba, six bunks down there, and five of, that'd be eleven on shift. If in fifty years, you need more than eleven on shift, we're gonna need another station anyway, and that, that means the tax base is gonna be that much bigger.
And, and, and no one.
Yep.
No one in this room is here in fifty years.
I could be.
I, I always love it, I love the optimism.
No, I agree with you.
I'm not here when I says that.
I may very well be.
I might be, but.
I mean, honestly, the, the concern is that that plan, the, for the fire station plan to work, we need to add two more people a shift. In order for it to work, that is a, that is a contingent for operationally for it to make sense.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
So, the, the, the money for the fire stations is a lot of money, and then there's the money of hiring more people, which, by all means, we would love to be able to be spread out in the right places to respond in a timely fashion, but we're aware of the fact that, you know, the community does not have twenty-five miles of lakefront property to tax on. We, we know who we take care of, and what we believe we could realistically ask from them. And our goal is to try to improve the mission. We can drastically improve our mission if we have two ambulances available to us. We can drastically improve that mission if we're able to staff those apparatus that are at the station that we're at. Two fire stations would be great, it'd be awesome, but if, we want to improve the mission.
What's the position of the floor on one or the other?
Center Street.
Center Street.
So, that wasn't the rest of the question?
That's the answer to your question, the position of one fire station is Center Street.
Park, Park or Sanborn, either?
If, if, if it's one fire station, it's Center Street.
Park or Sanborn?
We do not have a position on that.
Okay.
So can I ask another question?
Well, I can get one last question.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, wait. Like, so we kinda jump ship on your list?
Oh, no, I mean, it goes back to timing, right? So, I guess I'm curious in the rationale of, right, you move over to San Warren Street, or whatever it is, I'm on Park Street, how long does it take you to get there? Like, that's my question, like, we live in a rural community, this isn't Manchester, this isn't Concord, right? Like, I know you wanna be there fast, because you wanna do the right thing for the community mission, and I support that. However, your community, like, may not have that money to keep doing the tax, so if it's one of those things of, yes, I hope my house never catches on fire, I hope that I never need an ambulance, but the reality is, it may happen. What if you pose that to the community of, like, listen, we can move to San Warren Road, or whatever it is, and the cost is gonna be this amount, but that means that our timing would be this. And why don't you leave that up to the community, if like, the price tag is one of the bigger factors?
Well, of course, the people that live near San Warren Road are gonna be all over it.
Are gonna be like, sure, that's fine, but ask the other people on the other side.
So, that's exactly what we did one and a half years ago.
Okay, so I didn't just take that survey, right, so.
We, the, the questions in the results of that survey are on the website.
Okay.
It was painful in the lack of clarity that we received.
Right, but you also received a very small response, which I think is, is challenging, absolutely, right? You can send out a survey, and no one's gonna answer, then you don't have.
I did the survey, it was also painful that, no, I don't think a lot of people that filled it out realized you wanted two fire stations. That was not clear to me, so like, like, that, that is a possible outcome.
They didn't.
I mean, you didn't even ask if we thought we needed a new fire station in that survey, it just kinda jumped the shark and said, what are you, all the things you want in there? You know, I, I live, I'm fortunate enough to have a peek-a-boo view of Wintisbomb, so my taxes doubled, so I think, one thing I would stress is, I, I support the firemen, I think they need the proper building and all of that, but you, we've been, Tilton's been whacked with taxes. I would ask, you know, I, and I also live right next door to that beautiful ninety-million-dollar resort, I'd have heard rumors that it's gonna be assessed at half a billion, I mean, does that solve our woes? I don't know, I don't know how much you guys take that into account, again, they've got thirty-seven acres with the most shorefront in the Lakes region, that should be assessed. I've heard, I've actually heard from people in the town that that might be assessed at what the rest of Tilton is worth.
Well, at the end of the day, if you're asking about impact fees, those can't be retroactive. Those, those impact fees have to be in place before development. So, with respect to the hotel, we cannot go back to them and say, we need an impact fee payment.
Do they not pay, though, the fire district tax?
Yeah.
So, so per thousand, if that's five hundred million dollars, how much does that make the fire district?
So, um, I can speak a little bit to that, the, and Sean, you might, oh, the, um, total value of Tilton for twenty-twenty-five went up three point nine five percent, of which some of that is the, the lake estates, but that's not all of it, because the lake estate wasn't finished by April thirtieth, or whatever the date is.
It wasn't done. I think it was actually very, there was nothing there, because they actually timed the construction to be after the assessment.
They, um, they, they will be the largest taxpayer in Tilton.
As they should.
Once we get there, Jay Gill used to hold that spot, um, and we encourage competition. But yes, um, they will pay their share of, of the tax.
Do they get the same district tax as residents?
Yes.
So again, if they're valued at half a billion dollars?
Yeah, I don't think.
I mean, again, it costs ninety million to build it, what's it worth?
Yeah.
It's gotta be worth several hundred million.
I don't know the answer to that yet.
If, if it comes in under two hundred million, then somebody's scamming somebody, because again, my house isn't worth a million, but I gotta pay a million dollars worth of taxes.
But their tax rate is the same, so it's based on the value, they pay the same rate.
So when they pay the same rate, it'll actually lower Northfield's contribution.
That's what I'm saying, are you guys, are you taking that into consideration then, because you don't need as much, again, if you also, you have two hundred million dollars to multiply by your district rate, then the rate should come down.
But they can't really work on it, I don't, and right now, it's, I don't know.
It, it will help.
Well, I'm just saying, like, when I go to that meeting, and we think we're taking that burden on, but if you're looking at a golden goose that potentially, do you wonder, again, whatever that number is, that's gotta be.
Are you Tilton or Northfield?
Tilton, I live next door to the resort, literally.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Um, and the other thing that will happen, um, you know, just to muddy the waters even more, is as, as that comes onto the tax roll at the full rate, then does the value of Tilton rise, uh, again, about faster than Northfield? So, we move beyond paying, you know, sixty-five percent, the seventy percent, the seventy-two percent, or whatever it is. So, it, it will have, for the, for the, um, fire district, that resort will have a positive impact on Northfield. You know, it's tiny.
It should, and all of us, shouldn't it? Again, if it's, if it's worth two hundred million.
Yes, yes. It's not just helping Tilton, it's helping, it's helping.
No, no, it's the district.
Which is, ironically, uh, it should be lower risk, because if it's safe and sprinkled and inspected and code and everything, and alarmed.
Is it?
Yes, all those things are.
I know, I got a guy for that.
Well, that's why, I, again, I'm just talking about fair share, their tax burden is, they're part of Tilton, they're gonna be at the edge of your, your call range, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, they're at the edge of Tilton.
Sean, Sean said it best when he said, all these stations proposal in the last twenty years have been further away from my house. That's, that's true, it's, you know, um, but, as, as development continues to improve in both towns, and building applications get improved, and you know, we're, we're, we're improving our tax base, uh, that's, that's good for everybody, and it, it, you know, it goes to help our veterans home, our multifamilies, our old buildings, our non-sprinkled buildings, our, our, you know, we talk about Main Street, but we talk about Elm Street, and Art Street, and the, the village of what's not as, you know, uh, protected and more fire susceptible. And then, our, our vulnerabilities with EMS continue to be seventy percent here. Hyland Mo, uh, the bike park, the bike park, veterans home, you know, and beyond that, so.
Tim, so, can I follow up with your?
Yeah.
Wait one moment, I'm, I'm trying to hear from everybody, Helen, and it was a gentleman right behind you who had a question or comment, Mike?
Well, I mean, just a comment, because, uh, I've heard you refer back to many times the letter, uh, that created the task for your, uh, for the committee, and I was a signer of that letter. But when I signed that letter, I had no idea it meant twenty-two million dollars.
None of us said.
And, uh, you know, it, the sticker shock was amazing, and would I support that as a taxpayer, a deputy chief? No, uh, I can't, and I won't. Now, what's come before us is, I think we've come to the realization that that isn't gonna happen, so, so what are we gonna do? Matt has thrown a proposal in front of us, supported by, uh, a union of full-time firefighters, that, most of them don't live in this community. Now, if I was a firefighter, and I didn't pay taxes here, get me the biggest and best, that's not the message. Their message is, we might be able to get by with what we got, with some modifications. Matt also, you know, brought forth that this change is coming, things are evolving, um, and we may be talking about regionalization more, and, you know, wood building, new buildings in certain places may rock the boat on that. So I've been intrigued with this remodeling, uh, if it's possible, of the original station. I hate to use the word Band-Aid, but for now. Because guess what? We've been at this for forty-five years, we got nowhere, we're stuck in the same building. For forty-five years, we keep talking about, where are we gonna be in thirty years? Who ever dreamed we'd be in the same place for forty-five? You know, is that an alternative that we haven't tried yet? And again, to look at it as possibly, and again, I hate the word Band-Aid, but to make it work for another five to ten years, till we figure out how the demographics are all gonna work out. Two stations are no good without people in them. So if we're gonna have two stations, there's gotta be people in them, or stop. Empty stations are no good, call people aren't banging the doors down to get in. You know, we're, we're lucky enough to have a call force now of, I think, we went to.
Thirteen.
Yep, and, um, and again, some of those very active people are over the age of sixty, you know. They're very good, and they're doing a hell of a job for us, and I'd like to think I was one of them. But, um, you know, once again, uh, Paul, you said it the other night, you know, here we go, do we have to start all over again in another five years? You know, is this an alternative? Is it a Band-Aid, uh, that can get us through, till we figure out the demographics of this whole thing? Because the demographics of this fight department is changing all the time, why six people? Well, if you have chest pains, you're going to Concord, you're not going to Laconia or Franklin, we're taking you to Concord, that takes time. If you have, oh boy, if I get the right term, an obstetric issue, or childbirth issue, you're not going to Laconia, you're not going to Franklin, you're going to Concord. That takes extra time, uh, for our people to run down there with an ambulance, to get you the best possible care that you can get, and that's at Concord Hospital. Takes a little longer to get there. So, again, the people thing is coming, uh, and it may come, and with a talk of possible renovations, making room for six people at the old station, can we wean those people in? Can we wean the eight in, two at a time, four at a time? I don't know what, what.
But, but we also know that you are gonna do something there, and in five years' time, or ten years' time, people are gonna go, well, we just spent all that money on that. They're not gonna hear that it was a Band-Aid, they're gonna expect that, yeah.
Did you hear what I said? We got nothing in the last forty-five years, we've gone to the single station, we've gone to double station, we got nothing, we're still there.
Everybody seems to wanna wait five years, I've heard that for twenty, let's wait five years.
Exactly.
We waited five years, five times.
And kick the can down the road, now, we're gonna make a smaller can, let's, Center Street is a smaller can to kick down the road.
But it's gonna be viewed as a fifty-year plan in five years' time.
So, let's make the can smaller, let's just make the can smaller, kick that down the road.
It's already been a hundred fifty. Absolutely.
Comments to the committee and the chairman, not to each other.
So, this isn't the first time we've heard, let's do something at Center Street, in fact, we spent money with LaRaro to look at Center Street.
Spent money.
I'm saying, we spent money.
Spent money.
To look at, at, um.
The parking report, it's all it was.
Center Street. And we paid money for a document, I don't know, we paid them nine thousand dollars for that? Ninety-plus percent of that information was free public information on the internet. Because I had it at the same time they did. And they, I don't know. It seems like every time, you know, I'm, I'm really sorry, I hate this fucking position, we are a committee, we should be facing our crowd, not have our bad.
We can hear you fine, but.
Well, yeah, um, it's not the first time we've heard Center Street, I don't think it's a terrible idea. If I could think of who it was that first brought it to us, I'd give them credit, and I don't remember. Um, and I guess it really doesn't matter, right? We could, any business, but it's not the first time, we spent money, and I, I've felt like, almost from the beginning, that every time we focus on something, someone didn't want it, and they shut the lights off on us. I, I don't think the Center Street deal is a bad idea. I don't know how we get land we don't have, because it's Tilton, right, or is that private? Is that law private?
No, I don't think they're, they're not, the, the plan wouldn't be the, the footprint's no bigger than it is now. It's, it's, it's just building, it's just two, two ambulances and an engine, that's all talking about, just a Band-Aid. It doesn't, it doesn't add any more equipment, it's just the, so, um.
It adds an ambulance.
It adds an ambulance, I'm sorry, adds an.
I think what you're asking, and I may be wrong, is who owns the parking lot? Is it the, uh, the businesses on Main Street, or is it the town of Tilton? Is it, was that your question?
There is a piece of that that's privately owned.
Yes, there is.
That's the first and portion.
When we paid LaRaro, and I'm gonna beat this to hell, nine thousand dollars, to tell us, no, you don't have enough there to do anything, are we shrinking the standard space required now, so we can?
Well, that, that original report, they had a four-base station there, and the footprint was bigger, it was all meant to be. And it went on to, the report only was about the parking, like, the building was too big, and there wasn't enough parking spaces.
I remember the back of that thing.
We'll send it to you later.
Well, and something was said like that about the Northfield Station, too, that we couldn't do anything there.
And I don't understand when we have a high school built in the nineteen fifties, and then we add a agricultural senate built in the nineteen eighties,
and we're told we can't join things together, but they did. I, I don't understand engineering, and Lisa, you got a guy that's through all this.
I'm gonna talk this one, because I sat here and scribbled out parking, and said we could do this and that, and the answer was no.
Does it matter if, you know, high school is different than somebody sleeping overnight?
So our, as a, as a building committee, we were given a directive, no, forget Center Street, that was what we were given.
So, I think from what I've.
Uh, given, from a member of the department?
From the chief.
Okay, well, he, he's no longer here.
Correct, I realize that, I've been on committees, previous committees and everything, and all we ever do is, oh, let's go this way, let's go that way, let's go this way.
We saw that.
We've never accomplished anything.
And, again, for forty-five years.
And it's always because people change, and people, well, we gotta do this, that, I mean, when we first started, put this out to bid, we were building a headquarters at Park Street, and keeping Center Street. Then it expanded, no, no, we need two stations, so, we just keep, we just keep trotting along.
So, I believe it was a Wednesday night, we had a meeting at this table, the foreman chief was at the end of the table, and the question was asked, has that letter, chief recommendation changed? It was a very swift no. I think by now, it has to have changed, has it not?
Can I, I'll speak to my portion of the letter, so that portion of the letter, we, I, I've been a strong proponent of one station, just one station, because stations, like, when I go. Because stations, like, when I go out here, we had more apparatus than I've ever seen in the fire department. We had no one to run it. We'd have a fire and it would sit in the station. It, it, it's the same thing with fire stations. I could build six fire stations if I don't have people in it. The people are what doing, those guys over there, they're what putting the fires out. They're what's doing CPR. Getting them on a piece of apparatus and get, that's the most important part of our mission. I think when we accomplish our mission on a daily basis, they're great, you know, they're great. So, put us wherever you want, really, I mean, it's, that's my opinion. Well, I was, we were asked, we were tasked as a deputy chiefs, the two deputy chiefs and the chief, to come up with a two-station design, what would you like to see? And so, with a two-station design, that's what we'd like to see. We didn't say, me and Mike, I mean, I don't think, if you read that document, it doesn't say build us a new one. It doesn't, and it doesn't, it just tells you whichever apparatus should be where and how many people should be there. The rest, we, I, I, I mean, I'm not big on these big fancy fire stations with big clock towers and big host towers and training this and training that. Just put us somewhere so we can get on a piece of apparatus and get to the call. It's not, we're not looking for the biggest, the best. And if you look through that document, and nowhere in that document, I don't think, and Mike can concur, said, build us a brand-new station or build us a thirty-two thousand square foot between the two stations. Nowhere it said that. It just said, at Sanborn Road, if you're gonna have two stations and these are your locations, Sanborn Road should have room for a piece of fire apparatus, whether that's a ladder or an engine. Remember, or, that's, it's ladder or an engine and two ambulances and a pickup truck. That's all that should be up there. And then down at Park Street have the, have room for two ambulances, and I know we don't have four and I'll get to that in a second. You know, but have room for the remaining apparatus, but two ambulances down at Park Street. And just, and so, having availability to have two ambulances at each station, we have, well, we have two with one on order, we'll have three ambulances. I could move the second ambulance back and forth depending on where the call volume is. And that's all we asked for. We didn't say build new, we didn't say this, we didn't say build thirty thousand square feet. We said, this is where the personnel should be. It should be a headquarters in Northfield with four people, with two people up at Sanborn Road, and that should be the apparatus. That's all we said. That was a long, two-page document that said that. But that's what, that's what that document said.
Now, you could have been guided in a different direction as you went along, but-
No, we actually-
A little bit of clarification. So, we've been working with LaRaro for two and a half years or so. And we would sit here as a building committee, we would discuss space needs, response times, et cetera. And we would rely on one person to contact the architect with our concerns. That changed about five months ago. Where on weekly team meetings with LaRaro, it was not just the chief interacting with the architect. It was myself and now it's Tim as well. So, what we're, the feedback we're getting from LaRaro is that many of our recommendations as a committee were shot down and were pushed aside before they were adequately looked into by LaRaro. So, the dynamic has changed, I think significantly for the better. Unfortunately, a lot of what we're discussing was placed in concrete very early on. One second. So, just some clarification. So, now, I, I'm trying to keep track of who's next. Helen, you have another comment?
So, I have two comments, one because of this conversation. I think the Center Street idea and expansion of that is a good idea. I still think you need to strengthen Park Street and have two facilities because you can't put all of your equipment here. So, that, it might be a good possibility so long as you have the ambulances up here. That's just one thought. The other thing, Tim, I wanted to go back and question you on this Lake Side Estate property, whatever they're calling themselves. So, if I understand you correctly, they've been assessed and they're not gonna be reassessed for five years?
No, that's not true. Sorry, I didn't-
Okay, well, that's my interpretation, okay. So, they could be reassessed now. So, let's just say theoretically. So, how would that impact the financial situ, side of the picture?
So, when a, when a building permit is given for any project in town, the, the project is valued on the town books in April. Do you know the date?
I don't really, the day?
Yeah, it's either fifteen or thirty, I don't-
So, they take the status of the project as of April. And that's, and that, that's the value that they assess it at and then it goes onto the tax rolls at that amount. And then every year, obviously, the town can be reassessed. So, that value for the Lake Estates will fully come on board next-
This coming April. Will fully, will fully come on board.
That's, that's based on the certificate of occupancy, I'm assuming? Once they've received a CO, it's okay, now we go back and-
I'm assuming they've got their CO because it's legal and all, so-
And I think from that point, the town goes back and says, okay, it's time to reassess it fully.
So, how does that impact, that's the question I'm driving at. How does that impact the amount of money that we could have available to the district?
So, when we at town meeting, and there's a lot of people in this room that can help me out with this, at town meeting, when we approve the budget for the town, whether that's the town or the district or the school, we approve a dollar amount to spend. And then at the end of the year here, November, December, the state looks at the valuation of all the property and the amount of money that was approved in all those budgets and they calculate out a tax rate of how much money you have to collect based on the property value. So, as the property value increases, you, and if your budget was all the same, your tax rate would go down.
I guess I'm not getting my question across in the right way. Can I agree with you for you?
Tilton, Tilton Northfield.
Let me just try one more time. I'm, I'm trying to think of a way, we've got a twenty million dollar project. We're trying to get funding for it. However, our tax, taxable base, just generally speaking, is gonna go up next year, by the end of next year. So, we may have to get funding for half of it now and by next year, we're gonna have a bigger pot so we won't have to actually bond the full twenty million, let's just say. Because we're gonna have a big, I mean, do you understand what I'm driving at?
So, well, let me explain it another way, maybe you can make the connection. So, if the value in Tilton goes up four percent over last year, that means that everybody's budget can go up four percent and it won't impact your taxes. Because the property value grew the same as the, as the budgets all grew.
Okay.
So, knowing that, like, Tilton this year went up three point nine five percent. So, when the town comes and the district comes before the voters and has a four percent budget increase, it's not gonna impact the tax rate. And that's the simplified version, because there's a lot of verticals there. So, yes, a bond coming in the future. So typically, a bond, you're paying back the same amount or reducing now each year, but the tax rate is, the tax base is increasing. So, the tax rate goes down over time for that, the bond part. So, each year, yes, you're paying less.
Can you take out bonds in smaller increments? Do you have to bond twenty million?
The, the, explain the Franklin Savings Bank.
So typically, the way this project would work and we've got a lot of expertise with our good friends over at Franklin Savings Bank, we handle our banking. But this is what the town of Tilton did with the police station. You take out a two-year construction loan. And so, you pull out the money as you needed to pay the contractor. So, you're only paying interest on the amount you've actually taken out.
That's where I'm going, okay.
They can extend that for another two years if your project takes longer than two years. At the end of the project, then you take out the bond. So, you've already expended all the money. It's not like you're taking out the full bond and not spending the money over the next couple of years. So, it's a construction loan and when the project's completed, you turn it into a bond.
Whatever's left. Because meanwhile, you will have been taking some of that tax funding that we get and continuing to throw it into the fund for the housing, correct? For the building? I mean, we've built up-
Not necessarily, no.
You're still gonna spend the twenty-one- Yeah, I'm not saying you're not gonna spend the twenty-one years. I'm just trying to figure out a way to finance it.
You're taking our tax money for four years and putting it towards-
Oh, no, you, oh, no, no, you won't be taking the tax money in advance. So, if, if-
So, you don't take the money until you buy anyways?
You've been building a building fund.
Yeah, then that's been a separate warrant article. And like last year, that wasn't approved, so no additional money went into that account.
Okay.
Yeah. So, no, and that, you wouldn't be making that, that full payment on the bond wouldn't happen in the first year because you would only be paying for the interest on the construction loan. So, your taxes would only go up the amount that was necessary, not the full amount of the bond. Because that wouldn't happen until year three, four, or five down the road.
Kind of ramp into it.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
This is back to when Mike was talking about the Center Street. It seems like hardly an issue that I've heard in the last couple of meetings was this, the front steps of the building are actually the street itself, pretty much. Is, has there ever been talks in the town of Tilton of kind of discontinuing that as a street and making that just more an area that you could just, Mike probably said, kind of a unofficial Band-Aid situation that would give you space to work then? There was, because I gotta say that I've lived here since I was a little kid and I even talked to people at one of the other meetings, they never really understood that that's an actual street. They just thought it was a back parking and just called Central Street.
So, that's over here, right? Center Street starts there, I'm just going to go-
Yeah, it goes straight through, but it's, it's like if you don't really realize that, you just think that's access to parking.
Parking lot, parking lot.
So, yeah, so it's like, could the town have talked, told me, talked to him and see if that could be discontinued as a street to let you guys have room to work, maybe get more room to do what you need to do? If that, if that building is still gonna be used?
I think at the end of the day, it's not gonna have a lot of usable space because you'll still need to go-
You couldn't move that, you couldn't move the building forward at all. I mean, that would be in the southern direction. You couldn't move the building southerly because you couldn't get an apparatus in. It would have to be right where it is, anyway.
Is there space in back of it?
No, because the, the rail, well, there is space behind it, but the railroad owns it. We, we have an easement, we're allowed to park there and use it, but we could never build anything on it.
So, one of the things that has come to light very recently is with the parking combativeness with regards to adjacent to the fire department building, the town of Tilton resurveyed their property there. And what Sean, what the chief was describing earlier was that the fire district actually owns two more spaces there than we thought.
I've been told that verbally, I have not seen that we've, we requested the paperwork a couple of times now. From my understanding, I have not requested personally, but to my understanding, we've requested that a couple of times and not seen it. So, I've only got a verbal, we own this, but I've never, we, we, before we say we own it, we really should see that document. And that's something I can request again.
So, for those of you who aren't familiar with what's going on over at the fire department and parking lot, if you were, if you were in the building looking out towards Main Street, the fire department owns a few spaces to the right of the building. To the left of the building, we don't own anything. There's a fire escape coming down outside the building that's right on the edge of the property. And then the, our spaces, they're there, the, the way the spacing is done in that parking lot, there's two together all the way down towards the end of the parking lot. And then there was an aisleway that brought you in along the, behind those double spaces and there was a row of spaces along the railroad tracks. Well, as it turns out, down in the farther end, that's all privately owned. And if you drive back there, you see it's all roped off. So, effectively, what's happened is, if there's cars parked in the two spaces between the fire station and that privately owned section of lot, there's no way to get to the back row or the parking spaces along the railroad tracks unless you go behind the fire station. And firefighters end up parking back there, it's pretty tight. So, the town was requested, what, what, what are you gonna do about the parking problem back here? And that's what caused them to do the survey. The hope was that they would open up a couple of those spaces to drive through to the back spaces. They decided not to do that as I'm-
They actually had a survey.
I've, I've been told, again, verbally, I have not seen it, but I was told that because they don't own those spaces, they don't have any room to open up and they decided not to open those spaces. Because they were gonna open those spaces up. Because we have potholes, we, we just paid, I say we, the district just paid order paving to reclaim, put all reclaim back there and roll it. And it was really nice. And all of a sudden, in the wintertime, people just kept driving and driving and driving. Because there's literally inches between the, the staff members' cars and the generator there. And that creates, and it creates a big pothole and we gotta, so we just spent all that money, they got a reclaim, now we have a giant pothole again there because everybody's coming through there. I think I've seen a dumpster truck try to go through there and then have to back out of that before. I don't know, you know the guy who was driving it? But, and so, they were gonna open those two spaces up. And then, when they, again, I haven't seen it, but when they were told they don't own that, they're not gonna open them up now.
Can I make a point about new construction? If you're going to try to reconstruct a building, you don't have room for anybody to come in with their construction equipment to reconstruct. Because you don't own enough around it. So, you'd have to close the parking lot. The other parking lot's just for construction.
Demolition and-
You need space and you don't have it. Now, can you renovate? That's a different thing, but you don't have room to reconstruct a structure.
You had mentioned, you didn't say who, but you had said somebody, when there was talks about rehabbing or remodeling, was it an engineer, was that a LaRaro person that said no? Because I-
No, that was the former chief.
Okay. Again, from, as a taxpayer, I kind, I've worked for governments before and it's just, obviously, it doesn't seem like there's a big incentive for them to keep the cost down because they wanna pitch you guys a project and they wanna be the construction oversight as well. So, like, you know, what is it, a million bucks is in the plan for them to make off of this twenty-one million dollar project, right? So, I guess I'm just curious, you know, how much of an incentive was for them to look for alternatives or did they just go right to the biggest, biggest thing they could?
It's the exact opposite of the email.
Exact opposite, honest. LaRaro has been fantastic to work with. In fact, one of the things we were going to discuss tonight is five pages of recommendations they're bringing forward to reduce the cost. Ideas, correct. Thank you. Lisa, you're the best. You always reel me in.
I don't wanna take this like too long, but I, one thing, you know, I asked the chief for some data. As a taxpayer, again, like, I'm kind of wondering, are we just looking at two fire stations because we've had two fire stations? Like, does the call volume, the chief has said he prefer one. And I know it's a land issue and all of that, but I think that just makes it harder for the taxpayers. Because there is that replication of the turnout gear room and you're doubling everything.
So, here's, here's where I'm gonna jump back in. I don't think the ask is for two fire stations, but I think the fifty-year need is for two fire stations. And we don't have two fire stations. We have a fire station and we have a garage with a couple of trucks in it.
Understood.
So, we don't have two fire stations.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, so, they're not staffed, they're not housed.
But I guess we were making do by, so the chief, and I wasn't aware of this, and I'm sure a lot of taxpayers aren't, that you guys actually set a truck over here and then run crews over to-
Yep, yeah, so, on a subject call-
To get in a truck and go fight a fire, like, that's crazy.
They gotta go get stuff out of a cold building.
So, you basically have one fire station and a garage.
And a, and a supplemental storage area where they have to take all their stuff and transfer it to another truck. And then go-
But then that makes two full-blown fire stations kind of sound a little bit even more than that.
Not full-blown, substation.
Not full-blown, substation, substation.
Twenty-one million dollars, I don't care what's in it. I mean, as a taxpayer-
As a taxpayer, I'm, I'm with you. Fixed income, work for the state, there's no more fixed income than that.
I understand the need and all that, but still, the bottom line is twenty-one million.
Separated, I get it, okay? You, we can talk, you know, on the curb, but-
I, I think we would all love to have one station, we could find a piece of land.
If, if we could find the place to do everything, and we've, we have blown off the eastern part of this district for twenty years. When, when it's gone closed. And there, there are comments about what they did for us, but we have, we have gaps.
Sure.
So we're trying to get a little footprint, a little bit away from here, to run what we do and try to do what we do, or they do as well as they do, and then, and then develop Park Street into a longer-term solution.
And I would just say though, as a taxpayer, again, we all got whacked in the last year. Some more than others, again, mine went up one hundred and forty percent.
Yeah, oh, no, you know what?
My neighbors on fixed income pay a thousand dollars a month in property taxes in Tilton.
You know, you know what that is?
It's not Meredith, it's Tilton.
You, you know what that is? That's our, all of us, all are our commercial stuff. Well, that's why I ask who's in the room, because everybody's banking on the reserve or the preserve or the estate
The estate.
To save our ass, but usually, it's the folks from Northfield that ask that because they don't have a commercial tax base, and they've neglected to do that, and they've neglected to develop it, and they have commercial zones that they continually restrict on building up. And they say, well, Tilton has a commercial this, and Tilton has commercial that, and Tilton has income. Well, I'm in Tilton, you know, so, so there's, so there's that, so that's-
So why don't we just build a-
Is there any new public input? Because we, I'll open it again at the end, but we have a meeting to-
Why don't you just build a garage over at Sandburne, and then rebuild this one?
Okay, point well taken. Where were you four years ago?
I'm passionate about like-
I'm just, I'm just joking.
Just like the, this is the second I've heard it out. You're going, you're here, you gotta go pick up stuff over there, and then you gotta go. What's the timing difference of having one station at one of these locations versus having to do that right now?
Uh, probably about six minutes, I think, one of my guys timed it.
Okay, so what is the difference of six minutes from, for that versus being just at Park Street or just-
So that's six minutes on a second call. So we rerun around six, six calls, six and a half calls a day. Let's, let's call it six, just for easy math. We do, we do more than six, but for six, uh, twenty, you know, thirty-something percent of our calls are second calls. So two of those six calls on a daily basis will be a second call. So the first four calls, I'm handling appropriately. It's the, it's the two calls, the additional calls, that you need the extra six minutes. So it's, if we go from, um, what am I trying to say? I'm sorry. If we go from two calls a day adding the additional six minutes to all six calls a day adding the additional six minutes, we're doing a disservice to the first four calls. Does that make sense?
I suppose so.
Yeah, so instead of-
Again, it's a rural community, like I'm like, I'm not in Manchester, but-
You said rural, I, 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 I say, I, I hear you say rural, and we are rural. I mean, we do have rural areas. We're the second busiest fire department in Lake City Mutual Fire Aid. Uh, there's thirty-seven district towns in the Lake City Mutual Fire. We're busier than Franklin, we're busier than Plymouth, we're busier than them all. We're up ten percent this year. We're gonna be at twenty, we're, we're gonna be at twenty-four, over twenty-four hundred calls this year. We, our ambulances go, and they go a lot. Uh, there's days that they don't, but there's days that they do ten, twelve calls a day. We, we, we say we're rural, but we are a busy community.
Well, we're not having like any of that data, and maybe it's available for me to look at on the website, and I can take that initiative and do that. I'm just saying, like, as I'm hearing this, I'm like, I just don't understand why the two stations. I get the timing, I get all of that, but, um, just a quick note on the Northfield side of commercial. They are pretty much reducing a lot of that because they keep saying they don't have space, and it's only residential.
Right.
But they're not allowing residential either builds, so.
Yeah, well, but-
And that's something I brought up too, and where are we going?
Yeah, the whole western side of Park Street is a commercial zone. I was a real, I carried a realtor license for twelve years. I sold property up and down Park Street. And that, and going all the way to, you know, to the industrial building down there, that, that whole side is owned. So that's, that's a whole nother conversation that we're not gonna get into.
Just one final comment on what Sean was saying there. So moving, moving the station, moving to just Park Street, if sixty, seventy percent of the calls are in Tilton, we're going to increase the response time to sixty, seventy percent of our calls.
And so if, I'm not saying just Park Street. If you wanna move to Sandburne, I have no problem with that, and I'm on Park Street. Okay, that's all I'm saying. What I'm saying is like, one station seems sufficient, seems like that's the way we would like to go, and it sounds like the former chief caused a lot of conflict with that. I would say as a taxpayer who plans on dying in her house because I will never be able to afford to live anywhere else, I get the fifty-year plan, I'd like to not have to do this in another twenty, thirty years of whatever, but at the same time, Northfield's also getting a water treatment plant, that's five million dollars. Now you're gonna do this, then they're gonna need-
Northfield or Water District?
Water.
The Water District.
Yeah, it's two towns.
Yeah, okay, so, but even if, like, and then Northfield is now getting a new police station allegedly. Like, there's so many things that if that was on my disclosures, I probably wouldn't have bought here. Because I'm already like, my taxes are going up again because I did, like, I just, there's too much going on in this short amount of time that I've had neighbors now say, there's no way I can afford this, so I'm gonna move.
Yeah.
So what you're gonna get is you're gonna get people starting to look to sell their houses, and that's gonna be a known thing of everyone in Tilton, Northfield are selling their houses because they can't afford the taxes. And I know Conker just went up a ton too, but like, these are things we need to consider as a community.
And please help.
I know you guys have done a lot, but I think there's an opportunity for one station, right?
Yeah, well, I would, I would say, and, well, Paul, Paul's been around longer than all of us, and every time something proposes to build in Northfield, Tilton votes against, right? And then every time something, we wanna build in Tilton, Northfield says no.
I'm fine with that, I'm all right.
So we're, we're, we're trying, we're trying to address all the needs of everybody, and we don't wanna come back to this, I'll be dead in fifty years. Hopefully less, but we, we, we want, listen, for my, for my grandson, who's six, right? So we're trying to build a plan, and that, I think that's the overarching goal, is to have a plan that addresses as many needs as possible and not come back. And because we've had people talk to us in the public meetings and say, well, let's just wait five years. The cost of five years is gonna double a project. The cost of this, the next five years is gonna double a project.
And that's why I'm not saying it's for that, I'm just saying maybe an, an adjustment.
Yeah, no, I, I, we- Yeah, we're, we're all trying to figure out, no, I, yeah, I know, there's-
Sorry, I heard another talking, I was saying-
Thank you. Last, please, last comment, Dave.
Thank you, guys. Okay, but just a couple of things. I've, I've heard rumors too, that Northfield did commercial development, and they've always said it's partly because they haven't got northern access to ninety-three unless they go into Tilton. But also, the reality in my mind, and maybe it's a small mind, is if people are saying we're gonna move if this project goes through because we can't afford it, and you've been a real estate agent, if, if my house is valued at, say, three hundred thousand on the real estate market, and I sell it that much money, that's all I'm gonna be able to buy somewhere else in another town. So the reality, most people, they can put the house up and say, but you're not gonna get any, do any better. So the reality is they really want to be able to move, in my, my thinking.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome to stick around, we're gonna shift gears and jump to our normal meeting.
Normal.
That's pretty normal.
So, as discussed, we, um, the, the weekend, the architects spent a lot of time coming up with ideas and potential cost savings. Um, and they were in fact, um, modified this morning. So I guess, well-
Do we all get copies?
No, the building committee did. Before we jump to that, I guess what I'd like to do is, is get a hold and determine what direction the building at, the building committee wants to at. Jared, you want to come over?
I'm gonna go, right, yes.
What direction the building committee will give to the commissioners.
That's fine.
So, um, I'll start. Dennis Manning could not be here tonight. And he asked me to read this into the record. So this is his opinion on the results of the public outreach and the direction he would like to see us move forward with. Dear Commissioners and Committee, it is my opinion that the proposal of the Facilities Committee, the LaRrow Engineering Associates Incorporated, be presented as a warrant article at the twenty-twenty-sixth district meeting. After much thought, I believe the cost of the project should not be a deterrent from doing so. As I stated at the Public Information Session this last, this past Wednesday evening, the proposal is based on a study of operational needs, call volume, response time, high priority, and high-risk locations. The cost of a facility is an easy excuse for inaction. I choose not to enable said excuse by withholding four years of deliberate and effective work done on this project. Any facility proposed based on cost without addressing actual needs is not worth consideration, never mind funding and construction. It would be a disservice to the district, the employees, and the residents, current and future, to design and construct any facility that does not meet the aforementioned needs. So that's Dennis's opinion. I guess what I'd like to do is, Lisa, what's your opinion?
When I first heard the twenty-one million dollar sitting at this table up here, I said, NFW, it's not gonna pass. And I want something to pass. After the public meetings and information, we're getting that same feedback. No way are the taxpayers gonna vote for a twenty-one million dollar project. So I disagree with Dennis. You can go off, you can put out the warrant article, I don't think it's gonna pass. And then we're even further behind because we got nothing. I would think that we could come up with some kind of a proposal of either addition at Park Street and renovations at Center Street, or headquarters at, we, but I, I'm willing to bet that if you put just the, the cost of Park Street out on a warrant article, which was twelve million dollars, you might get a yes vote. But that doesn't address the concerns that, that, um, the firefighters at Center Street. But if you, if you built something at Park Street and you've kept something at Center Street, I think you can make many people happy. And so maybe some of that money is, we can, we can reduce some parts of Park Street, forget Sandborne Road for now, because I don't think it'll pass, and do some renovations at Center Street. So that, that's where I would head it, rather than getting nothing.
I would not go to district meeting twenty-six with a twenty-one million dollar plan if I had half of it in mind. I think if we do that, I think it looks very cocky. With that, with that message, I think, although there was a duplication of, same people were at all meetings to a degree, there was some, yeah, all kinds of- I think that, based on historical attendance at district meetings, those two meetings and just a few others are enough to tank the vote. I'm not looking to be told no at the end. It doesn't make any sense. We, I believe we will look smarter and more complete. If we get to where we are and we go, oh my goodness, did you see that number? That's not, we can't do that. We need to regroup and rethink. There's, and if it goes to the district meeting, I'll be in L, and I'll be speaker. We've done this so many times, we keep getting kicked in the knees. Show that our minds are open, our eyes are open, and our hearts are open to the people who pay the damn bill. If we can't do that, we ought not be doing it.
I don't know. Obviously, I missed what everybody else said earlier, so.
It was all public comment. We, this is the beginning of a-
I mean, twenty-two million dollars, like Kevin said, and Lisa both said, not gonna pass. We all know that, but somehow, some way, we gotta come up with an idea to get it to pass.
Hold, can I ask?
Sure.
Your question was, do we think it should go to vote?
My question is, what do you think our recommendation to the Commissioners should be?
And I would recommend to Commissioners that they do not present this twenty-sixth. I think I misunderstood your question.
Well, at the end of the day, that's the function of this committee, right? Is to make a recommendation to the Commissioners, so that's what I'm focused on. What do we want our recommendation to be? So you're, you would wanna regroup, take a step back, or it's? Derek?
Ah, no, I'm, I'm gonna be the first one to hear if I was a taxpayer in this town, say no. Twenty-one million dollars is ridiculous. Am I, you have my recommendation, Matt Givens has said that. Said my recommendation the whole time, been on this committee, I think.
Paul, can I clarify my response?
Absolutely.
I still think we should have a warrant article next spring because we've done too much work to knock, and we've had public presentations. I think that the public will be more receptive to a smaller number in building either one station with renovations, but I still think we need a warrant article, just not twenty-one million.
Well, wait, wait.
Twelve.
I did speak with LaRrow. I did ask LaRrow specifically if after tonight's meeting, we ask them to regroup and reduce the square footage and the cost of these buildings, would they be able to give us a firm, knowledge-based estimate before March? And they said no. So it's, at the end of the, the day, if we bring forward a warrant, if the Commissioners bring forward a warrant article, it's either going to be, it will have to be for this proposal. We can't say, well, we'll just build half of it, and we want a bond for twelve million. Because a lot of the costing also is the fact that they're going to have construction equipment here. And to be able to do site work at Park Street and site work at Sandborne Road with a little bit of overlap, they had intended on saving money by not having-
Site mobilized, mobilized, right?
But they can certainly give us a price for not, for not building Sandborne Road and building Park Street. They have quantities, they have everything. It might go up, it might not be twelve million dollars.
Right, it will go up. But I guess my point is, is, does that solve the problem? Or is that just bringing forward something?
It's a, it's a interim solution where you have a station that you- It's a interim solution where you have a station that you have two stations with staff because you're putting dorm rooms over at Park Street, and you have dorm rooms over at Center Street. So, you are solving some of the future's problems. And some of the current problems, really, because you don't have room for six.
The sad part is, is that taxpayers at Tilton, they're not gonna go for that because the taxpayers in Northfield keep saying they wanna split the district. So, and Tilton's 70% on the hook for that.
So, we get nothing.
And that's the perennial problem.
If you separate...
Tilton won't vote for that. No, they'll vote Tilton, and they just...
If you separate the current plan into two projects, neither do the jobs. Is that correct?
You're saying if only Park Street or only...
If we just, if we took, if we took a knife and we carved Sanborn Road out and left what is currently proposed for Park Street, I don't think that solves the problem, does it? Because it's too small. Because if it wasn't too small, that would be a...
Well, that's why you don't get rid of Center Street.
And you're further away from the east part of the district that's been neglected for 20 years.
But you're keeping Center Street, is what my point is.
Are you?
That's what I'm proposing, because that was one of our things we reviewed, remember? That was the very first charge, basically, was to build a headquarters at Park Street, keeping Center Street, you know?
I think the best idea I've heard to date, of all the ideas I've ever heard, is what was brought to us previously and what was reinforced here tonight. Just Center Street, maybe Northfield. And I think that that takes away some out of the, well, I live in Northfield, so I'm not voting for shit, so... It takes that away. And I think it takes away a good portion of it.
Well, if you would redo Center Street, why wouldn't you just do Sanborn Road? What's the difference?
Right.
What's it take to knock down a building and rebuild a new one? A two-story versus a single story.
You're gonna build a $12 million station on Sanborn Road when you're gonna do a $4 million station on Center Street.
Do we have a bid for the Center Street station at $4 million? Because I thought Sanborn was like eight.
It is, but that's bigger than...
But that's gonna be, you're gonna build a small station down here?
Yeah.
And then have another station here?
Yep.
And what size, you're just gonna build one state, one headquarters on Sanborn Road? Was that what you were just saying?
No.
No.
Oh, I thought that's what you just said, sorry.
But why would, why would we knock down Center Street and try to rebuild there? I don't know that anybody gave us a quote for $4 million to take down Center Street and put up.
They didn't. It's a rough number. You're correct. It is a rough number.
Okay.
If it was a, if it was $5 million bucks, you could pay it off in 10 years.
Or do you knock the building down and just, you just instead take the lean-to off the side and rebuild the side?
You don't have the room.
So, Lisa, you, in my opinion, just, I wanna, you know this better than the rest of us, right?
Well, I'm not playing that.
If you, yeah, but, so, say we go...
You have to lease space around you.
So, if we went, and this is, this is why it's important to have people who, different people on this committee. If we went and tore down Center Street and rebuilt it, and the town of Tilton said, "No way you can use our property. Could we build that station?"
Well, you'd have to, if you'd have to block the street and use the street.
And if they said no, and if the town of Tilton, so we would have to, I had never thought of that.
Unless there are parking spaces, are the private parking spaces?
We own six right now. That's not included.
And are they adjacent to that, to the other private spaces?
No, there's town property.
There's town property. So, if the town said no...
If you have private property right next to it, you could make a deal with that private property owner to temporarily use their property.
I don't think we could get a, I don't think we could get a deal with them.
Well, I'm just saying. Because you need, you need room for trucks, trains, you know, concrete trucks gotta come in. You need room.
You drop Phil.
Well, but would money talk? Because a lot of these construction sites, they have to rent the space from a private contractor.
They do this in the city all the time.
Yes, but you need to have agreements with some...
No question about it.
Just renovate.
Okay, back to the Paul. So, we've heard from everybody except for Paul. And my opinion is, is that this should not be brought forward at the 2026 meeting. I feel that we need to take a step back. Under Sean's direction and guidance, he's got substantially different opinions than Chief Citar did. And continuing collaboration with Deputy Robinson, I think we can scale back a little bit, look hard at these recommendations from LaRaro, and bring forward a project in 2027. And I say that with a huge qualification. If we're able to reduce 4,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet, I don't know what it is, we're gonna end up paying as much in 2027 as this proposal is. So, we're not gonna say that...
Absolutely.
You're not, because of just the cost.
I think I mentioned at the, well, in conversation, one of the members of the Tilton PD Building Committee pulled me aside after the Monday meeting and said, "Paul, on the date of the dedication of that building, the contractor told him, 'Had you started this project today, it would have been, it would have cost twice what it actually cost.'" So, my fear is, we kick the can down the road, we reduce, we cut, we hack, it's still gonna be $21 million.
And you're correct.
So, Paul, to be clear, and I don't wanna speak for my colleagues on the Commissioner's side, are you suggesting that the opinion of the three chiefs that wrote the recommendation letter is not valid or not in unison, and is not what, no longer in play to the, as the communication from the chiefs to the Commissioners?
I don't know if it's the actual wording of the recommendation, or if it's, I'll speak for myself, my interpretation of that recommendation. But what I'm seeing is two different things. I'm seeing a written document that gave me guidance in one direction. And again, it could vary, I don't wanna speak for you guys, and I'm absolutely not cutting you off at the knees. But what I'm saying is, my interpretation of that document is different than what I'm hearing. So, it must be my interpretation.
Or we just run around the bottom one more time and get, let's refresh, and, you know...
My interpretation is identical to yours.
So, thank you.
Because I had an angry guy come out of Andover or Webster and kick us in the teeth, implying that, and insulting everybody in the room on Monday at the PD, and implying that one person could wink to everybody and let everybody around by the nose. And that, that, there was a poisoned fruit on a tree that's been there for three years. You know, I don't, I don't like that. I don't like when somebody comes in to our town, our community, and implies that somebody put one over on all of us, right?
Especially when they've been on involved for the past three years.
You know, so I gotta get past that, and I gotta get back to the fact that we have way more talent in the room, in a seated committee with multiple former Commissioners and engineers and builders and people in the know, and to allow, or to think that that public comment said, "Oh, no, this, this individual designed the whole thing, and that we're operating under some other guidelines." I'd like to think that a group of chiefs got together, Commissioners, your committee, and I think that the opinions and the talent and the resources that, and paid engineers and thousands of dollars that have gone out the window are getting us in a much better direction than, than, you know, one person would say, "Ah, well, somebody pulled all the strings and there's one puppet master." We're all better than that, and that...
But that will be said at, at a hand or meaning, it will.
I'll go toe-toe with that every day, every day. Because I respect everybody here that's worked their ass off in all these committees and all these meetings and all these hours and all the lost sleep and all the engineering and the costs and the reviews that...
And at the end of the day, the elephant in the room is that if we decide to regroup, we're gonna have another year worth of engineering costs.
Right, and inflation. And we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get that at this price. We're gonna get less.
One way or another, there's gonna be a warrant article related to a building next year. Either a warrant article for this building, these buildings, or a warrant article for engineering costs. And I think you've said it innumerable times. How many times are we just gonna take money and throw it away?
To talk about it.
To talk about it. Is that...
Always, you have a budget.
Always, and I don't even think I really wanna know what the total is.
You don't. It's a lot.
I did it for a police department, and it sucked.
It's been crazy over time, the amount of money that we just...
So, should we just put the article out there and let it fall where it may, and maybe it'll get work? At this point, would, to stop and not do it, then you just blew our engineering...
Or is it tiered as we do an ABC, like we do a warrant article one for Park, for Sanborn, fails, we do warrant article two for Park Street, warrant article three? I don't know. I...
If either one of those buildings would cure anything by itself...
And you've asked that.
I would get in your boat with you.
And I don't, I don't think that's it either.
It doesn't do it.
We, the public is asking for choices, but I don't think, you know, I think Dennis the other night said, "Listen, this is, this is kind of a bundled thing, the way it's, the way it's tied together, and it, it works for this, and it works for that, and it works here and there." No, I, I wish we could just say, you know, because we've had the public say, "I want options, and I want choices," but I don't think they are informed to know that one will...
They, and they don't understand the process well enough to understand what will and won't work, what you can and can't do.
And what, what will keep, what will keep the business running? What will keep the service and the calls and the response and the talent?
Then the only thing is to explain it to them at a meeting and let the chips fall where they may. Because you start over now, like, like you said, it's gonna, three years from now, half of the building space is going to cost $21 million.
Right. So, I have, you know, I'm gonna lose some sleep over this. You want some of my thoughts?
Absolutely, impulse, emphasis.
So, and you guys were at the meeting, and I think, you know, it's been shared, nobody, in my opinion, nobody questions the need. It's the cost.
Absolutely.
And we can talk about, you know, locations and where the headquarters and all that. So, I, I read through those suggestions that LaRaro sent over, and the comments ever made. And in building a 50-year building, if you read through those suggestions, there's a lot of things where we added cost. Little things like, I don't know, Lisa probably knew this, but I didn't. But if you're putting up a cement block with a brick face...
We don't have a brick face. Where did, do you guys ever think we, they have a cost in there? That's what, if we're gonna go through this.
So, the cement block walls require a bigger foundation. So, you're adding cost for the foundation, you're adding cost for the blocks, you're adding cost for masonry.
But they talked about a brick shelf, which that doesn't...
We don't, we always say, but they have the wrong numbers, so they actually can reduce the cost just on the numbers alone.
That wasn't the topic I was bringing up. Just an example of, like, when we asked about not putting the door in the back and bricking it, and it's like, because of the labor intensity of the block wall, it was more expensive. There are things like that all through the building. The interior block walls instead of sheetrock, building on masonry building instead of a wood frame building, blah, blah, blah. The list goes on and on and on. So, I sat there and said, "All right, what is the dollar amount that we would like to get to?" In my mind, it's $12 million. And I don't know if we...
For both buildings?
Yeah, do a whole project, $12 million. You haven't let me finish.
Same number, they just refer.
You haven't let me finish.
Talking to a car.
Go ahead.
Hey, the flow maps are included.
He's still in the red.
So, my thought was, all right, you, we'll do the easy one first. Sanborn Road, you look through there and you say, "All right, what can we cut out of there? Couple bays, and the bays need to be as big as they are, blah, blah, blah." That's easy. We can come up with some square foot savings up there. Rework the building. Some of these suggestions is a wood frame building instead of a masonry building. Can we redo the base so we don't have to have as much pavement on the ground? Those type of things. Ask for their help. Park Street, we don't take down the current building. So, take the whole plan that you have, apparatus bay, just chop all that out of the plan. We're gonna build the admin side. Take the decon room out, take a couple of dorm rooms out, rework the sizing over there, reduce the size of that building, build it next door. I don't know how many feet that needs to be. Six feet, 10 feet, 20 feet, just build it next to the current building. Take in consideration all those ways to reduce the cost. What does that now cost? Can they get that down? Maybe they can't. Maybe it's still $16 million. Maybe it's still $15 million. But I have to think, if you took 6,000 square foot out of the building over there, that's gotta be several millions and millions of dollars. And then you reduce the cost of everything you are building, what does that look like? What does that plan look like? That was my thought.
And then you construct it two years later, because by the time we go to the warrant article again...
Well, you bring it up in 2027, because, right, we're gonna have to have...
So, we're gonna cut things, but the cost will be the same.
I would hope it wouldn't be twice as much. We're gonna, we're gonna cut, you know, I don't know, 7, 8,000 square feet out of it.
And the inflation was pegged at, what, 7? What? I, I'm with you on the Park Street side of it. I feel like, I just wasn't ready to knock down that building. We had a member of the public think that that should just be resurfaced and made into, that the garage could be all the admin space. But that's way too much admin space. Those offices are too big, too much, you know? And that, and that the garage would go into the, where the gully is, you know? Now, you're trying to pull trucks out into the, basically into the, you know, on-ramp of exit 19, you know, site distance and all that. But, but I'm with you. I feel like Park Street 2.0 could be, as you described, detached. I don't, you know, does, does the building have some deficiencies? Yeah. But can we get away with putting the administration and training and, you know? I mean, it's, that's way out of the box, but, you know, you, you're saying things to him that I've been thinking about, as far as the Park Street that goes. And I don't know, yeah, block and brick, I thought it was just all block. I didn't know that it was a brick.
I think at the end of the day...
It's just looking at those elevations.
No, I think at the end of the day, Brian was just jotting down notes, and that came to mind. He's working on five different projects right now. So, I wouldn't get hung up on that. But at the end of the day, you know, you take eight-inch concrete blocks for an exterior wall compared to a wooden structure, there's a significant difference in weight. So, Paul, what do you think?
Number one, there's no way $21 million, because I would not vote for it. There we go. So, what you have to do is kind of regroup and come up with a better idea. I mean, I don't know the idea. It's gotta be way out there. My goal was, actually, it was more than his. I figured about 10, somewhere around 10. I was way off.
10 what, 1,000 square feet?
No, no, 10 million.
$10 million.
Yeah. I guess I weren't even close, but there's no way. I mean, $21 million is a lot of money.
Well, it's down to, not necessarily what you want, what can you sell to the community?
That's right.
Uh, because.
Well, excuse me, Mike, let's take a step back. This committee's work was focused strictly on necessity, need. And we didn't get the number until the fourth or the third of November. So this was never looked at as a 20 million dollar project. What can we get? This was, these are the needs of the fire district. Let's lay that out. What's it gonna cost?
We were told the square footage cost for building was gonna be 379 dollars per square foot. What is it? 800?
Eight, right around 800.
So right around June, we were told 379 by someone.
A lot of that is, um, because of, like, the, on Sanborn Road, it's the sewer. You, because of the, the chemicals that basically come off a fire truck, you can't use a septic system over there because it's a, um, water protection area, so you have to have sewer, so you have to bring sewer up from, that's a huge part, portion of the cost on Sanborn Road is the sewer.
So if you're doing it in your head, you're like, oh, 379.
You'd be pulling it off the J.J. line.
They should have known that before then. I mean, they should have been able to tell you that.
The PD, the PD is, the PD is on a private sector, but there's, uh.
They did know, they did tell us that. That didn't pop up at the end.
We knew that.
We just didn't know the cost.
They know the cost.
We didn't know the cost.
And you can't put a cost to it. You don't know what you're, what you're proposing. So they did, Lorero did it right. It's just that we don't like the answer, right? We can't just, it's like going to, to look at cars and going, wow, I really like this big truck. And you drive away with, you know, the used VW in the, actually even those are expensive.
Does it cost that much? Cause it's a forced main. Is it a forced main?
No.
It's not.
It's gravity down to, uh, cause J.J.'s got a line and then you'd be coming in. I don't know why the PD went with private sector.
800,000 dollars for that and it's a gravity line?
Yeah, cause there's, 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 there's a couple of, there's a couple of manholes in, uh, there's a couple of manholes on 132.
No.
I don't, I don't, I don't see that as a.
They're not coming down.
So, back to Paul. So you're not in favor of this. What are you in favor of?
Well, my goal was Patrick along. One station on Patrick. I've always been like that and I'll always be like that. And I, I'm not, I'm not neglecting East Tilton. It's because the majority of the calls, the people, you know, you got the veterans home, you got the bike pack, you got all them things there. And we shouldn't look at, well, Tilton pays more than I do.
No, we're not looking at what Tilton pays more. We're adding three minutes response time to 70% of the people that includes the town of Northfield by putting all our eggs in one basket down in Northfield. There needs to be an emergency response of some sort in the town of Tilton.
It, it's the same way now, Mike. You get a second call, they have to get down there. That's six minutes.
Absolutely.
Six minutes.
Absolutely. But for a bunch of them, we got it right here. And, uh, so that's.
People don't say anything because it takes an extra six minute. You'd reduce three minutes by having it down there.
Exactly, but again, we're dealing with some people that are talking about, you know, uh, separating the two towns. Right.
It's not gonna happen. Northfield can't afford it.
Well, it keeps coming up and it's been a two-town meeting.
It comes, it comes from Northfield, cause they, they're paying 30% of something.
It keeps coming up.
And they're gonna pay 100% of something.
It may keep coming up, but it's not gonna happen. I don't think.
Well, I wish I had as much confidence as you do.
Somebody has to make minutes of this conversation, so please, one person.
This'll be Mackenzie's first minutes. This'll be a treat.
Discussion ensued.
That'll be your favorite term.
So, Paul.
Actually, actually, this, they decided, I forget what year it was, years ago, splitting up. And we hired an attorney. I was, I was fighting, sure. We had an attorney sitting down what it's gonna cost to split up. And there's no way, there's no way you could afford it.
Yeah.
Tilton or Northfield.
Yeah.
Paul, let's take a step back to the commissioner's recommendation to this committee. Was that a unanimous vote by the commissioners to forward that recommendation?
I think it was at the time.
Yeah, I think it was.
So what you're saying is you were never for it.
For what?
For the recommendation, because you just said, I always wanted Park Street alone.
I wanted Park Street? That, that was the ideal spot at one time. It was the center of town. When we built that station, I believe you paid, go down two houses. I believe there were two houses there. We bought the property and tore them down to build a station there, cause that was the center of town.
What we've been working on for the last three and a half years is a unanimous recommendation from the commissioners that in fact was not. Do you think that's fair and that's right to these people? We've been coming here.
I don't.
Once and twice a month for three and a half years.
I did not think it would pass if you didn't have the two stations. Any, what I, I thought you needed two stations in order for it to pass.
And now you say that the two stations that we have will never pass.
I don't, not 21 million dollars.
So, I go back to my question. Did we enter this knowing that it was gonna cost 21 million?
No, you didn't.
No, we didn't. We entered this based upon that recommendation. That's what we've been working from. And now what you're telling me is that you were never in favor of that recommendation.
I don't think that's what I heard him say.
No, I, I, until I heard the price. I would have gone either way if the price was right. I would have gone with two stations. You know, if you could do two stations for around 12 million, I would have voted for that.
I mean, I can sit here and say that I would vote for one station if we could put it where Kamala Parks is.
Well, we can't.
That's not an option, right? Well, I think that's what Paul's saying. He would go with one station in Northfield if that was gonna, if that would pass the vote, but it's not gonna pass the vote, so that's why he's.
The difference is.
You don't read more into it than what he's saying.
I'm, I'm trying not to, but what I'm, what I'm hearing is that money is the only factor. That you're not in favor of it because of the money.
The cost.
So I think that's a pretty common sentiment. So the next question is not what cost is tolerable to you. Where, how do we move forward?
To be honest with you, I do like the idea of renovating this station.
Renovation, not knocking it down and.
Not, okay, knocking it down.
You think, no, I think you should.
No, it's a, it's a tear down.
We'll have public comment again at the end. This is a meeting here. Let's.
And we went through this once before. I, I believe one of the firefighters brought it up about tearing it down or renovate, not renovate, tearing it down, rebuilding, and nothing was ever done. There weren't enough land, there weren't enough.
Well, we paid 9,000 dollars for bits of paper from Lorero. You say we can't do it.
We can't do it.
That's what was done with it.
And it stopped right there.
So, so your recommendation would to, would be to renovate Center Street and?
Yeah, rebuild it.
Build, rebuild Center Street and do what with Park Street?
I would do what we had, well, there we go. You wouldn't have to do anything right now. Maybe in the future you'd have to do something.
So where did we go from making a recommendation to the commissioners for 26 to what we think the building should be, whenever it is? Ultimately, it's these three gentlemen who are gonna put it on the warrant or they're not. Regardless of what they hear here tonight from, it's their warrant, they write it. Whatever they want on the warrant will be on the warrant. I thought we were taking a vote to recommend to them, yes, put it on the warrant or don't. Is that not?
Yes.
Somehow we got into what I think this building should be or that building should be.
Well, that's my hope, because I have the opinion of these three gentlemen, but you're absolutely right.
We have not come to a determination as to what our recommendation, our being the building committee, what the building committee's recommendation is to the commissioners. We've not settled that.
Correct.
We've not voted on that. We just went on to something else.
Correct. My fault.
No, I, I'm not pointing, I'm not.
No, you're right, you're right.
Well, is it an all or nothing? Because the, the way you questioned it is an all.
The way the warrant would have to be written, yes.
Well, no, what, what he asked was, do we have a warrant? Do we write a warrant article or not? That's really what you asked.
Yes. Do we recommend to the commissioners that we have, that we recommend this project at this cost? Or do we recommend, for instance, take a step back, spend a year, try to hack and whack and present it?
Again, for the 21 million.
Knowing that there's going to be engineering fees expended over the coming year.
So I didn't give you a correct answer. I didn't give you a yea or a nay. I gave you an alternate.
Well, that's where we're gonna end up, because we've heard two alternates already.
But as a.
In the discussion of yesterday.
But I didn't answer your question directly and if I, if it's an all or nothing, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna study it again. I'm gonna say, I wanna go to the taxpayer and let them shoot it down. Because we're gonna study it, we're gonna do all this again, then we're gonna go to the taxpayer and they're gonna shoot it down, cause it's the same cost.
But he was, what sense, we've already heard that it's not gonna be.
We might as well just go home and do nothing. That's really what's, what's happening, right? That's what's happening.
But did you hear what the public said? And did you react to what the public said? I guess it's.
Right, that's why I'm saying it's not an all or nothing, but I think the way you were wording it is.
For 26 it is, because we don't have time between now and the time the warrants do.
I think we did.
For a group. I straight up asked Brian exactly what I described and he says we do not have time. Because those warrant articles have to be turned in.
I looked at the dates. The first day you can do it is January 6th, but the last day you could do it is, is it, it's in February. I, but I don't know the date. It's, I feel like the 15th, but I don't, don't mark my words on that. But there is a, it, I, you have to have it in sometime middle to the end of February with the numbers approved by DRA, everything done, because you have to have a public hearing set and.
So, you don't, you don't have time for public information between now. But if you develop a, a new good plan, that at least most of the people will say, thank you, that's a good idea. And get the information out to the public.
Brian's.
We're, we're holidays, we.
Brian's fear honestly was not regarding a redesign. It was getting firm costing from subcontractors was his time concern.
And they can't, we can't work the old-fashioned way that says, this is all I can afford. What can we build? That's what I do. That's what I did for my garage. This is all I can do.
But did we learn that the 21 million is too much?
We did from the public meetings. That's the message I got.
My point earlier was, we learned the 21 million was too much. So presenting it, you know, at the town meeting says, you didn't listen to us, did you? Uh, that's my reaction.
I'm suggesting we propose a smaller number and we figure out how to use that smaller number to achieve whatever we can. Now, I don't know, that may be too loosey-goosey for a municipal project.
Well, I think, I think you're gonna get people who are gonna ask the question, well, what is that? What am I gonna get for that money? And, well, until you can tell me what I get, it's kinda like the, uh, yeah, they're not gonna approve that unless you can show them what they're gonna get.
But what I heard from the firefighters tonight, that there is something significantly less that we can live with and make happen.
If we can make it.
If we can.
If we can make it happen.
It can be done. I don't think it can be done physically. You cannot tear down the building, cause you don't own enough property around it.
We're good, well, the, the plan, the 21 million dollar plan includes, guess what? Tearing the building down. We don't own enough land to tear it down. We can't tear that down then either.
You can reconstruct. You can tear it down because Tilton wants it. They want that.
They want the paved parking.
I don't know. I'd like to see Tilton cooperate.
Are they gonna last use that municipal lot for the, for reconstruction?
Well, well, the other, never mind. Hold on.
So what's the recommendation of this committee?
I say nothing in 26.
Yeah, I guess we look like idiots if we go ahead and throw the 21 million. I'd like to modify it to something small and get something.
Are you in favor of spending the next year, recurge taking all this and bringing it forward in 27?
Me?
Kevin.
Oh, I thought.
Cause, no, I'm sorry, because you already said it, so I was.
You got no choice. It, it, I do not like throwing money away, but you've got no choice. It is part of the process. Because you know what? You wanna build them? I can put you up a building off a neck. But because it's public money, that's not the way to do it.
And spend next year and regrouping?
As long as you're gonna stay on the basis.
I don't know about that.
Gets the strings attached.
Uh, yeah, I agree with everybody else.
Okay, I think it's unanimous.
Well, it's not unanimous, cause that's Dennis, Dennis.
Yeah, that's correct. I'm sorry. And Nate is not here. I might suggest that if this committee continues, that we replace Nate. Not that, I don't wanna hear his opinion, it's just he has not been, his attendance has been shot, so.
Yeah, with the market.
I think, and please correct me if I'm misstating anything that you guys are thinking. I think our recommendation to you three gentlemen is that take a step back, regroup, put a warrant article on 2026 for engineering fees for reducing the size of these buildings with the intention of 2027 presenting a, a new project.
At what cost?
That's between you and Lorero.
No, it really isn't. If you're, your committee, if this committee is proposing that what is the, what is the cost of that warrant article to come back for us to make a decision?
We're gonna have to ask Lorero.
Well, yeah, well, so I, you know, it's tough to make a decision if it's 50,000, if it's 250,000.
Well, they're just making a recommendation.
Yeah.
We don't have a dollar mark. We can't make that.
And I asked Brian to put that on his radar. To come up with a formal proposal.
Well, I, I'm in agreement that we can't bring, or we shouldn't bring the project, um, to the district meeting in 2026 for 21 million dollars. And I am in agreement that we should continue the project, cause we can't just walk away and not present anything. Whether we do not present anything in 2026, we can't not present something in 27, 27, in my opinion. So I would be in favor of asking for more design money and, and we'll have to figure out how much money that is and where we wanna request it from.
Are you looking for a motion?
No.
Good.
Any further public comment? One, one second, David. Go ahead, Kevin.
There's no need for a motion. There's no need for a motion.
Right.
The commissioners...
Write the warrant articles.
They, they, two of them have said, no. So, as soon as I can tell, it will not be presented at twenty-twenty-six annual district meeting, unless someone wants to go to petition. And good luck to their source.
You're good at that.
Dave?
So, um, going by what your position is tonight, I would say, moving forward, I don't know how you would do this, but some way to make all knowledge immediately public available. And I know they have the internet and all that, and people can welcome to these meetings at all times. But somehow we gotta get information out there so that people hear it right off, so that we don't go to the meetings like we had the last, during the week.
Yeah.
And then people start shooting at you guys for...
Yeah, someone's gonna blow this up on Facebook tonight, it's been going on for days, and I don't even, I don't even belong to Facebook, so.
It's, so... It's a point well taken, I guess what I would fall back on is that these meetings are public, the minutes are published, is the...
The video is put on, the video will be on, usually within, usually the next day, sometimes two days.
But I, because the reason I'm saying is, because my wife and I, yeah, we try and get the information.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a, a lot of people that do try and get the information, but the stumbling block is the people that are not getting the information, because they choose not to get it, but they're also choosing to be misinformed, and then they are, can be a majority that's making the decision.
Yeah, I, you know, we can beat our heads against the wall trying to resolve that. I don't really have a good answer for a good feeling. So, um, with, with knowledge now that the video is on the website, that the minutes are available, that the meetings are open to the public, do you think that's enough, or do you think we should do more?
I, I think we should do more, only because of what I just said, that so many people choose to go by hearsay. I don't, I don't know, should you go down to the local area every Saturday morning and stand up and say this? I don't know, but my wife said maybe news article once a month that dedicated to what this, what you people have been doing. Because I, myself, I feel bad that I wasn't more, made myself more informed earlier. But I also feel bad for you guys doing all this work, and then you get all these misinformed people making bad decisions of their own accord, and then it wastes you guys' time and effort, and then you end up with nothing anyway, you know, you, you could've sat home doing nothing and had the same result.
I think the point well taken, I think one, one thing that we can, we can certainly do a better job at is having something prepared for the Northfield newsletters every time.
That's one, but you've got Tilton.
Yeah, but it's...
I mean, I'd like to add to that if I may, Paul.
Sure.
So, I, I completely agree with you, I think one of the problems that you're having right now is that you presented too late, and we talked about marketing a year ago, none of that stuff happened. And, and I think that's what, I think that's what you're talking about. We need to, we need to go out and actively talk to the public.
So, just on that note, if you don't mind me interrupting, and I apologize, but things go, you know, very quickly through my, my head. So, for the past five months, I've been meeting the public at Ross Cunningham's listening sessions at the library once a month, and every one of those visits, this is what we're working on. You've been at some of them, you've seen the plans, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him...
I understand that, Paul, but if people came to this meeting, why did they come? Because there was some material that was going to be presented, that was gonna talk about what we wanted to do. And all I think we're saying is that you need to go out and say, we're going to have a public meeting, and this is gonna talk about the current status of where we are in the project development, okay? Or something like that, to get people to come, because these other things are not working. Because, I mean, even if you go to the Northfield newsletter, I read it religiously. Most people don't even get it, probably, right?
So, how do we reach those target people that you're describing?
Well, how did you reach them this time? But we were done our project, you can't, there were decisions made every meeting, and you were here, we're gonna, oh, we changed this room to this room, we cut the square footage, we cut the square footage. I know, but I think, I think, you know, so maybe it's a... And then we do it again in front of the public. Maybe it's a quarterly meeting, maybe it's not something that you do, because you have to have your meetings. But maybe every quarter you actually do something. That's all I'm suggesting, is that, that, that you have a little bit... We increased our meetings to two per month.
Did you hear what you just said? Maybe you have a meeting every quarter where you actually do something.
No, I did not say...
I heard it.
No, no, you added to it, Paul. I said, maybe you have a quarterly meeting, I did not say where you do something.
Well, that's roll the tape back.
Throw it out the red light.
I'm just, there's a more active market that needs to happen, and it needs to be earlier than it was this time, because you're now caught, you're now caught with your pants down, so to speak, and you can't do anything about it but delay it, which I think you're right, it's gonna potentially make it more costly, whatever you decide.
To your point, I've been pushing for public outreach for, since the last two years.
I am not blaming people, I think the commissioners are responsible for that.
Well, at the end of the day, you have public outreach, and you say, okay, we're looking at a fire station. First question, how much will it cost? We held off on this public outreach until we had a firm guaranteed maximum price.
Who is your contact? You need to explain to him that you need preliminary estimates at certain stages.
You can't do that.
You can't make decisions...
For Helen, this is the problem.
Okay. I have built million dollar buildings, I know what the problems are.
Helen, you have a, an architect, Kevin is a HVAC guy. I go to Kevin and I say, Kevin, I need a price on this, this equipment, this installation cost. And then Kevin crunches all the numbers, gives me a price, and then a month later, I come back to Kevin and I say, yeah, but... Now Kevin is like, why am I giving you a quote? This is going nowhere, so he puts it off a month. Then maybe you get a quote, and then I come back and say, yeah, but, but. Now Kevin says, I'm not giving you a quote.
Well, I will, but I'm gonna bill you more for it.
Can you give you the F?
Well, that's what has to happen. I miss money.
So, we held off on the public outreach until we had firm numbers.
Okay, and I get that, Paul, but it was too late. So, what can you do, what can you do to not be too late?
It's too late for what?
It was too late to address and take in the input and evolve the project within the same timeframe that you had wanted to do. And you don't wanna be in that position for twenty-seven, if you're gonna put it off for twenty-seven, and you're gonna go in November and get your final number and do your public meeting, and then they still beat you up and throw you under the bus, what have you gained? That's what I'm saying. And Tim gets it, and I, I actually, I, I'm not holding the building committee responsible for this. I do believe it's the commissioner's responsibility to engage the public in that discussion.
If, if a, a letter was sent, and I hate to say it, letters sent to every household in the two towns, would that make a difference? I don't know, it might, people wonder what the hell it is.
Well, we sent letters and we got four hundred responses.
Right, that's right.
That was crazy.
You gotta accept the fact.
It's just a suggestion, Tim gets it, so...
I could not agree more.
You know, you gotta just...
Getting information to the public is important. Here's my dilemma. How? What, what mechanism?
Well, we just get it to the, we just got it to the public. I don't understand your question, because whether we gave you this now, or we gave it to you six months ago, it's the same answer. If, okay, but at six months, no, no, I'm, what I'm saying is that if you had gotten the information, and I'm just saying theory, you got the information six months ago, then you got the response of, well, we're not gonna do twenty-one million. Then you had maybe had a chance to re-address the situation, and still have... That's where we're at, that's where we're at. It takes over a year to do that.
But she said, if, if we had that information out six months ago, and we're in the position we're in right now today, could Larrero come back with new pricing in time for the meeting?
Yeah. That's, I, I get it.
But they have to redesign, we have to redesign. No, I understand that, the problem is you don't wanna be in... You're gonna go through another year no matter what. Yeah, I know that, but what I'm saying is, don't have it happen another year. You don't want it to happen next year.
The real problem is, we changed our mind way too many damn times along the way to amount to anything. We're beyond lucky we amounted to what we did, because every single time we focused on something, we were pulled the other way.
We were in the middle of a proposal. I was just making a suggestion to follow up on what they were saying about getting... It takes a whole year after you get the price to redesign it, so it doesn't matter where in the... I see what, you're trying to cram it into more than one, more than one project estimate in one cycle or annual. I, I'm trying to get it in time so that if you have to respond, like you are now... Respond by what, redesigning? Yes, but... So, it takes another year to redesign, I don't think you understand the engineering process. But no, but it doesn't, it doesn't have to take a year to redesign. Oh, it does, it has taken us years to get, I, I've been on committee since two thousand nineteen, and I'm, I'm an engineer by trade, I'm retired.
All right, well...
It takes time, it doesn't matter, you're not gonna do two...
Point of order, it's ten minutes and eight, we need to move along.
We're gonna move along. All right, um, so the, the building committee's made their recommendation to the commissioners, we've gotten public comment. I don't know that there's any more discussion that we wanna have there. I know the commissioners have a couple things that we need to discuss, one of which will be not public. So, I'll wait for Paul to come out, but is there anything else to the building committee?
This is the last meeting until one, whatever.
So...
Well, for me, it might be more.
Very much support these joint meetings. And more than most people will believe, I like the public comment. However, if we are going to have this many people in a meeting at a table, every seat needs to face the public.
They probably shouldn't do it in this room.
It's that training room we wanted to build. I'm sorry, I could reset. I could reset.
Or you're cutting that one out.
I am not saying, I'm sitting here looking at that wall, when I'm trying to answer to the people who we work for, I don't want...
I, I look beautiful, Kevin, just turn around.
All right, point taken.
We need to be facing the people we are serving. I'm a back, my back to the wall, eyes on the door kind of guy. This, I don't know if you noticed, you always seem nervous. I do not like my position at this table.
All right, Paul, is there anything else for the building committee?
That's it for us. Is there anything else from the building committee?
See you next week.
There's no reason for us to schedule another meeting, right? Based on our recommendation for the commissioners.
This was our last...
Right, our top commissioners come back and ask for more.
Right, this was our last scheduled meeting, so, yeah, I agree.
Is there no more money left?
Um, so, there's ninety-five thousand dollars, ninety-five thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars remaining in the fund. However, we are, we have an outstanding bill, though we haven't billed yet, but we know we're gonna be billed for ninety thousand dollars.
So, Mike told us that we're about...
Effectively, we're out, we just, we gotta get that, we're gonna get that bill. I think they've done additional work too, um, so...
I didn't know if there was, there was money that...
No, no, we're done, we, 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 we done did, done did spend that money.
And more.
And more.
We're spending money on plans.
Yeah, and we're gonna spend more, more money on more plans, evidently.
I have gold right here, two cents.
All right, you're welcome to stay, you're not, you're not...
I've got a bag full of them.
So, do we wanna talk anymore about this? I'm just trying to reel it in.
You wanna think about it, and, because we have a meeting next weekend.
So, the chiefs gave us a recommendation, we gave them, we forwarded our recommendation to the committee, and the committee came back and said, we don't recommend it, period. And largely because of cost, they went out...
They, they didn't recommend that we put it on the warrant, yeah.
Because of...
Cost.
The cost. Okay, I just wanna know that that's where the committee left off, coming, coming back to us.
So, whether we want to...
They got a number, they don't like it, so...
Whether we wanna talk about it now or at the next meeting, I, I, I think...
Yep, I just wanna make sure I'm getting the flow here.
So, do you wanna process that on next week's meeting?
I can't process, we'll, I mean, we can finish our meeting.
Well, I don't wanna stay till nine o'clock.
Neither do I.
All right, so I, I'm proposing that we, um, we regroup on this at our next meeting, which is next Tuesday.
You need a motion to go with a non-public? Yeah, I need to pick one first.
We have to adjourn.
All right, Paul, you want to adjourn the building, any portion of this meeting?
He didn't have to, we just can, we can go with a non-public if they can continue the meeting.
Thank you, second, we are adjourning at seven fifty-six.
After Thanksgiving.
You take it.
See you next year.
Thank you all for your hard work.
Okay, guys, have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you for your...
Yes.
And we do thank you.
Okay, so, um, following, uh, seventy-four and twenty-four, one R C, four, five, six, seven, eight, um, Paul, seven, eight, Jason, R S A, ninety-one, calling...
You too, Paul, you too.
Ninety-one dash eight, phone three, woman, world, two, Brandon, nine. Consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel writing orally to one or more members of the legal body.
Thank you.
Where legal counsel is not present, we'll call vote, pause, or adjourn, it's to tell the evidence.
Add hope, marriage to the confusion.
Right, nine, five, six, seven, seven, fifty-seven.